Contract with Cyclo Media Technology Incorporated for GIS infrastructure asset data acquisition and Madam City Manager or the Director of IT. Would you like to open on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our Director of IT will open on the item. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. We worked with the city attorney's office and we identified that, you know, the unblurred data of the imaging is destroyed before any data is published, as well as the data that's collected is far less than what the Google Maps is collecting. So we already have more data with the Google Maps available out there than what we're trying to capture. The final imagery after it's captured, all of the, any face, if it's captured by mistake, it is blurred, any license plates are blurred, and all of the data, that's final product, is the asset layer. So there's no humans captured. For example, we'll be capturing stop signs, curb cuts, the paintings on the, whether it's a red, blue, you know, red or green parking zone, where are the cuts for the ADA ramps. So that's the data we're interested in for the needs of public works and other departments. When they go out, they can actually measure and have the information available before they go out and do a survey on a site.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll first go to Councilmember Harrison on the side of it. And before you speak, Councilmember Harrison, just remind the council of the rules that we adopted. For action items, councilmembers will have two minutes to make initial comments on an agenda item, except for the author of an agenda item who will have five minutes to initially present the item. After every councilmember has spoken or declined, we'll then go to public comment and then bring it back to the city council, in which members of the council have five minutes to address an item for an additional round of comments, which may be extended by a majority vote. So Councilmember Harrison, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I understood clearly that the staff intention was not to collect private information, but the surveillance policy doesn't require that it just be the intention. It says, "used, designed, or intended for." And I would say very clearly that while it's true that Google Maps has collected this information anyway, that's totally irrelevant. We are the government and we are very clear about not wanting to collect information and retain it when it's not a purpose that we see fit to. What we need to do is do a use policy for this technology. It's not a heavy burden for the staff. They could simply write a use policy that said, "It's not our intention to collect private data. We promise to delete it within 24 hours," or whatever period of time that they accidentally collect my car, my house, me. Even though that wasn't the intention, it's still being collected. And I think it's important that we have a use policy that says, "That's not our intention, and this is what we're going to do about it," which the staff has said. So I'm hopeful that they will come back with a use policy. I don't think I can otherwise vote for this. It's really, this is not, even though the contract is not what, it's not intended for this, this data will be collected accidentally, and we need to talk about a policy that describes what we're going to do about those circumstances. So that's what I would ask, is that we develop a use policy and come back with a vote on the use policy as is called for in the surveillance ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hahn?
Yeah, I just would like to second that. I, it kind of reminds me of, and I appreciate that staff took a look at it and they kind of, you know, felt like they could maybe work around the terminology in, in the surveillance ordinance, but I think the purpose of the ordinance is for it to be used and applied. And it's a little bit like when, when people on, in land use say, "Oh, well, there's an environmental impact, but it's just small and I'm going to already mitigate it, so I don't want to do an EIR." Well, actually, the EIR is the process by which you determine that it is small and you state how you're going to mitigate it. And I kind of feel the same way about this. It may be that, that this is at the low end of surveillance concern, but that doesn't mean that it should not go through the surveillance policy system. And let us, let us see that and let us determine, determine that ourselves. I'm not sure why we wouldn't. It's, it is a system that, that does have the capability and is designed to capture personal identifying data. The fact that they then, you know, make it fuzzy when they feed it to us doesn't mean that that data doesn't exist somewhere, doesn't mean that the company that stores that data on our behalf doesn't have that data. The, the surveillance ordinance is the means by which we determine what the challenges are to privacy and how and whether the mitigations are adequate. So it needs to go through that process. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. So I, I cannot support this without having it go through the surveillance ordinance. I, I do think it technically needs to go under it. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, the item is before us. Is there a motion to either adopt it or to refer it to the city manager to develop a, a use policy?
Ask the city manager to adopt the use policy?
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Councilor Davila?
Yes, so thank you, Councilmember Harrison and Vice Mayor Hahn. Those were some of the issues that I wanted to raise. You articulated those very well. But, you know, because also, I mean, Savita indicated that the images would be blurred, but I'm wondering, can that be reversed? It probably can be. It's just being blurred for our purposes, maybe not in their database. So I, I cannot support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers on this item? If so, please raise your hand.
I, this is Lori. I'm raising my hand. Let me figure it out.
Councilmember Droste?
Sorry, it's showing up in a different, a different format in my computer. I apologize. You know, I, I certainly respect my colleague's input. You know, I think it's important to our work plan to move ahead with this, and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to revisiting a policy in the future, but I think that it makes a lot of sense to move ahead and then address this with a separate policy matter. GIS is important to IT and to our various functioning. So I guess I, you know, I, I guess I'll make a substitute motion to adopt the item as written.
Okay, second it by?
I second it.
By Wangra. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Robinson?
I just wanted to hear from Savita real quick. I think that the last time we'd taken this up and we'd asked how urgent the measure was, and there was, I feel like I vaguely recalled settling on this date, but with a feeling that, you know, much later than this might be a problem. Can we have staff hop back on to weigh in on, I guess, how imminently or immediately we were hoping to use this contract or what projects might be backed up by?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So this project, the data that's extracted from this project will feed into the major Phase Two project for the funds replacement, the work order system. That project is moving along. All of the data that's extracted from multiple projects is feeding into that, and any delay in this project will delay that project. The other concern we have is right now, because of actually COVID restrictions, there's actually less people out on the road. So the, you know, earlier we could work on this project. It would help us do the drive when the roads have much less traffic on it and we'll get a better, like a curb cut or, you know, the parking markings on the road, the sewer manhole covers and all of that information will be captured much easier compared to when we're out of the restrictions and there's more community and public on the roads. Those are two of our major concerns.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers on the side of it? So please raise your hand. I, I'm torn on this. I, I think the concerns I've expressed by my colleagues are legitimate to ensure that this data is not used in a way that is surreptitious and would violate the letter or the spirit of the surveillance ordinance. At the same time, I do see a use to this particular data. So I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to Councilmember Droste that we do move ahead with approval of the item, but we request the city manager come back with a use policy to govern the use of this data.
Sure, I'm open to that. I, I guess my, my main question is, because we're in the midst of this emergency, I want to make sure that we're not going to pull them away from, you know, responding to these critically COVID-19-related items. I'm sure that's not your intention.
It's not my intention, but I do think people's privacy is also important as well.
I completely, I completely agree. I guess I'm just wondering, is it a general amendment to ask her to come back as soon as possible?
Yes, with a use policy.
Okay, I'll take that. Sure.
Thank you.
Sophie's been trying to raise her hand again.
I have the floor and I'm, I'd like to see if the seconded is acceptable, adding that friendly amendment.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I'll go to Council, Vice Mayor Hahn.
Thank you. I would just, I really would like to caution us. Technology is always useful. Obviously, staff would never be suggesting that we purchase or adopt technology that doesn't have enormous utility. They would never do that. They're responsible people. So I think the utility argument for the levels of intrusion of privacy that are coming our way are dangerous. I, I really do. And if, first of all, this is related to an ongoing issue. This is not COVID-related. This is just regular work that the city is moving forward. There is no urgency to this other than the urgency that we would like to have all our work move forward. There's no more urgency to this than the delays that, that we ask our, our police to engage in when new technologies are being, that have great utility are being introduced by them. Utility is not a reason. And COVID, there are systems coming down the pipe that are going to measure your temperature and that you're going to have to log in every day and provide personal biometric information on apps that they're going to ask you to download to your phone. And you know what? They're going to be really, really useful. And we cannot go down the road of using utility as an excuse to allow government to further encroach on privacy. Google is not the government yet, and I hope it never is because it is the ultimate surveillance state, and we cannot be led down the path to believe that because we are giving away our privacy to private interests, that it is the same as giving our privacy to the government. I mean, folks, read history. This is dangerous. We have to draw the line. So I, I'm just, I'm astounded. I'm begging you all. It's a couple of months. It's not a big deal. Hold the line. Do the right thing for privacy. Hold government back from all these intrusions and just vote to delay this. Please.
I recognize I actually did not follow the rules. We were, I was not supposed to recognize you, Vice Mayor Hahn, at this time, as each councilor would have one, a time to make initial comments, and then we go to public comment and then come back. So I apologize. I'm going to go to Councilmember Kessawani, and then I have a, a quick question, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I actually just wanted to clarify on your motion, or I'm sorry, your amendment. Is the expectation that the city manager has to come back with the policy and then we adopt the item? Or are you proposing adopt the item and then we do the policy at a later date?
But I actually think we need to set a timeframe.
Okay.
Before the deployment of this particular technology, that the use policy be brought before the council. So I was going to ask Savita or the city manager if that was possible.
If that's possible.
Yeah, and if I may chime in, Mayor and council. So the way the ordinance reads, if I understand it correctly, our obligation should be to get an acquisition report in front of you prior to anything being acquired. So approving the item tonight does not necessarily mean that the item is acquired. It authorized us to get, enter into that contractual discussion, and then we can follow up with that acquisition report as outlined before we buy anything, which outlines a number of different important items for you, as outlined in the ordinance. And then I believe subsequent to that, we would follow up with the actual surveillance use policy.
Well, I'm, I'm actually asking for something a little different, which is I would like there to be a policy in effect before we deploy this technology to minimize the surreptitious collection of data. If that is our intent, it should be codified in a policy. So what I'm asking, and Savita had suggested it's, it's possible that before we deploy the technology, that a policy be brought before the council for adoption. That is my request.
So I, I would back what David was saying. I think we can come back with the acquisition report at the council meeting, which will lay out how the data would be used, how the data would be, how the privacy would be done, because this consent item only gives us authority to have the spending authority to get into contractual agreement. A lot of the questions that are brought up by the council are actually addressed in our contract template. We have worked with city attorney's office recently, and we now have an appendix in all of our technology contracts, which has very strict requirements against the privacy of the data. It also follows the new privacy law that come, came out and became effective on January 1st, 2020. So we cannot do any of that work unless we have the spending authority from the council. Once we get the spending authority from council, then we go and work with the vendors and we make them sign those addendums on all of the privacy requirements that we have as a city.
Okay, that isn't what I requested. So I'm going to withdraw my friendly amendment. And I, I intend to vote for the, the Harrison-Hahn motion.
Well, Mayor, I suggest, let me just say, I suggest that because in the acquisition report, when we get that in front of you, that outlines a number of important items that I think would help, would provide the basis for whether or not you'd even want to approve the purchase of the technology. So I think it provides a good.
For the horse. So I'm going to vote for the Harrison-Hahn motion. Councilmember Bartlet?
Excuse me, I thought I had the floor.
Councilmember Kessawani, apologize.
Thank you very much. So can, can you just please clarify then? So, so I know you're saying expenditure authority. My understanding was this item was actually authorizing you to execute the contract. Are you saying that, that the, that there would be a, a point where this would come back to the council before you use the, the technology? I just want to make sure I understand what was just shared.
I believe that's how the acquisition report works, that we lay out how the data is used. It has different sections. The acquisition report talks about what we're planning to acquire, what technology it is, how the data is captured, how the data is stored, who will have access to the data, what is the data retention policy, data privacy policy, how long the data would be retained on our servers or vendor servers. All of that is listed out in the acquisition report.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, we can bring back that report at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kessawani. Sorry.
That's okay.
Moving quickly, Councilmember Robinson, and then we're going to go to public comment and come back. Unless, then Robinson.
Thank you. You know, I, I think it's, it's, it's important that, actually, in this context right now, where technology and the state are merging, and you saw the item before that we, that many of us have stand on, where you have this, this involuntary utilization of your data, usually, and it can be against your interests. So it's imperative that we kind of hold the line and be instructive to our residents and to other communities that privacy is integral to freedom. And coming off Memorial Day, we don't want to just harken to, to statism. Involuntary exchange of your data, which works against your interests. And unless we know that this data will be used in the residents' interest and not against them, then I don't support our involuntary acquisition and just sharing of it. So I'm, I'm going to oppose this.
Okay, so I don't see any other councilors that have not spoken yet, who have raised their hand. So if not, we're going to go to public comment. And if you would like to address this item, oh, actually, Councilmember Wangraff just raised her hand.
Yes, I guess I would like to ask the city manager, if we do not approve this item, what are the, what, what, what are the drawbacks? I mean, what, what will happen? What are the consequences to the council not moving forward with this item?
Thank you, City Manager, Councilmember Wangraff. I will have IT speak on the technology pieces and what we lose out on. I want to speak on specifically the cost impacts to Irma, because what we're seeing over time is our entire Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, all of these phases have had to be addressed. And we've come back to council multiple times to try and address the cost overruns for Irma. We will see an additional cost overrun. Not that cost should be the reason why you go against any value statement that's being made here this evening. That's not what we're asking. What we're asking is that we follow the procedures of the surveillance ordinance policy, which is acquisition report first and then the subsequent use report that comes thereafter. And that is the process that's already laid out that this council approved. And so, again, I think we're talking about a cost overrun that will happen as a result of Irma delayed project implementation. I do not have that cost available to share that with you this evening, but that, that will come, that will come at a cost to delay that project moving forward. So I'll let Savita and team speak to the technology issues that will go unaddressed if this project is delayed or if this contract is delayed. Thank you.
Sure. So on this particular item, this data that we're collecting using Cyclo Media contract, this is all of the infrastructure, where our stop signs are, where the traffic lights are, where the parking markings are. So if we do not have all of that inventory available to ourselves, then a lot of that data would be done manually. If someone reports, you know, a stop sign is broken or, you know, I know there was a stop sign, but the stop sign is missing, staff can quickly go online and check on these maps if there was a stop sign or, you know, what was the issue is, has a report already been, you know, complained or a work order already has been reported against that stop sign. So it will result in a lot of manual work for staff and they will have to do a lot of manual visits to identify what are the issues with the assets and the inventory out in the field. We're also trying to do the extraction of, for example, the bike lane assessments. Lot of that data would be able to happen through this because they can do measurements. So for example, if there's, after we capture the imagery, the end users and the public works staff would be able to say point A to point B, and they can measure length and height and width of that using the imagery. And all of that work, again, would be done manually if this is not done. It will result in a lot of inefficient workload for the public works and other department staff.
And can you tell me if other cities use this? Other Bay Area cities, do you know of any that have already employed this technology?
They use different flavors of this. Every city has their own technology, how they capture it. Some use more, there are different vendors who do this. We're, we can get you the list of the cities that are using this particular vendor. But different cities use similar technology, but with different vendors. This was a part of an RFP process, and we selected Cyclo Media.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go to public comment, I just have a clarifying question. I'm looking at the surveillance ordinance, particularly Section 2.99030, and I don't know if Mr. White or the city attorney can address this. This is a section under city council approval, and it states, "The city manager must obtain council approval, except in its exigent circumstances by placing an item on the, on an action calendar at a duly noticed meeting of the city council, prior to seeking soliciting, accepting grant funds for the purchase of, or in kind, or other donations of surveillance technology, et cetera, et cetera." And subsection three, "The city manager must submit for review a surveillance acquisition report and obtain city council approval of a surveillance use policy prior to engaging in any of the actions described in Sections 1A and D." So it's not just requiring an acquisition report, it requires a use policy. So, I mean, staff stated that they don't think this is subject to the surveillance ordinance to begin with. I disagree. I wrote the ordinance. I think that we need an acquisition report and we need a policy. I want a policy in effect that, that ensures that the data is protected and that's being used for the purposes that are expressed. Seems that that's what the surveillance ordinance requires as well.
The mayor, that, that would flow correctly. And so I, I think all we're suggesting is, if that's the direction council wants to go, is that we would take the first step and bring you forward the acquisition report. And assuming that that was approved by council, that would then form the basis for the policy.
We're, we're in the ordinance to say that the acquisition report predates the surveillance use policy. Subsection three of Section 2.99030, city council approval requirement, states that the report and the use policy must be presented to the council.
So I think where you look at the subsection two, right above that, where it talks about the city manager must prevent a surveillance use policy for each technology to the Police Review Commission prior to adoption by the city council. It says, "The Police Review Commission shall also be provided with the corresponding surveillance acquisition report that had been presented to council for that surveillance technology." So I think the way I'm looking at that is that we would do the acquisition report first, and then we would do the policy, go to PRC, and then after we go to PRC, we come to council.
It's been, the, when we got the reports, it was both at the same time.
So that, this is, so I, I think where the, the.
I'm stating what my opinion is. I would like a policy in place or a, a express intent that the data is not going to be used for surreptitious purposes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Whatever the council so chooses tonight, we will honor your direction as a full body. So whatever your vote is, we are going to honor that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to public comment. If you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand or press star nine. The first speaker is Blair V.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I do that as a check. Thank you very much. In Santa Clara County, where I'm from, the VTA Public Transit System has developed a, a system for its ALPRs that once held a commercial data collection for 180 days. It's now trying to go down to 90 days, and a few years it can go down to 45 days as a testament to how to develop good practices that all parts of the community can help develop at this time. We are simply at a time of learning in what can be better openness and shared community practices to the future of tech, and that is meant to work as some of the very ideas of peace, good local practices, and positive sustainability. These are the structured guidelines, legal precedents, studies and examples that can help our lives in many ways, and that Berkeley City Government will simply have to review again in the, in the coming months. Again, a thank you to the current line of questioning by city council around 5G and other tech issues. We are at an awkward time, going through another emergency situation. It's awkward and appalling set of decision-making based on nations of the world. They've, they've, they've made some really bad decisions for ourselves, yet these accountability practices with technology, they offer the ideas of positive sustainability that we really need to trust, I feel. And to just simply work with its guidelines, we can come up with our own ideas. And if we're always doing that, constantly doing that, that's how we build our positive, peaceful, sustainable future. So good luck in your efforts and thank you for your work in wanting to review the policies at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Chimmy Lee.
Sorry, I need to. Yes, I really applaud all of you for, for your caution, because I agree with Savita Hahn, the vice chair, that, you know, Google, Google, who has just, they just, just have cash. They can buy Boeing and they can buy the bus planes, whatever they're called. They can buy Boeing, and they can buy the bus planes, whatever they're called. And they can, they can tweak, I'm sure they have the technology, just like NASA has, tweaking all those, stuff they sent up to, uh, to survey, uh, planets and asteroids. They, Google, I know, I'm sure can tweak anything. So I really applaud your, um, and, and I would definitely applaud you for, um, researching other cities and how they're doing with this kind of technological thing. So I really, I'm very happy you're going through this with great caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is JP Masser. You're alive.
Hello?
Yes.
Great. Uh, this, I'm speaking for Oakland Privacy, following up on our May 14 letter, uh, regarding this item. Uh, we second Councilman, Councilperson Harrisons and Hans and Mayor Aragine's comments on this. Um, I think, I think the conversation has changed now. My comments were originally based on the, uh, staff report that suggested a, a policy was not recorded at all. But it seems that the council has converged on that a policy is needed. It's simply the order, um, in which things need to be done, and that's good. I think it's clear from the surveillance ordinance that, uh, Mayor Aragine's interpretation is correct. I will provide, um, a, uh, some, um, I don't know what the word is, but, um, at, for, I have attended numerous, um, Oakland Privacy Advisory Commission meetings where surveillance policies and acquisition reports are presented, uh, for, for equipment that is used by the Oakland Police and, and other city agencies in Oakland. And every time that that is done, an acquisition report and a use policy are presented simultaneously for consideration. And then the, the Privacy Commission discusses it and passes it up to the council with, uh, possibly with modifications. Obviously, that isn't exactly what's going on here, but that, but the idea that the acquisition report and the use policy should be presented at the same time, uh, is what's done there. It should be what's done here, and I think it's very important that it be done here. So, um, great. I think I can not say the rest of my comments based on, uh, the comments that have gone so far. Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker is Bryce Nessbit.
Hello, council. So I sit as a member of the Public Works Commission, but that committee's not meeting, and I'm speaking here as an individual anyway. Uh, council's focusing largely on the surveillance issue. I want you to keep in mind that data is fragile. Once collected, it quickly gets out of date. And I'm skeptical that this city at this time is ready to make this leap to moving to electronic records in the way that's anticipated. And I say that as a fan of GIS technology and a member of several project teams implementing GIS. I prefer to see the city first really get into GIS and make it part of the workflow before spending money to collect all of these data locations that, if you're not into it, just will degrade. It won't be useful. Now, switching back to surveillance, I think you should pay more attention to what I just said, but I'll comment on surveillance as well. Ongoing surveillance like Google does is a big concern. One-time events don't have nearly the same potential impacts. This appears to be largely a one-time survey to populate the location of curb cuts and stop signs and infrastructure. It appears to be largely a survey from public spaces, viewing nothing that's not already public. As such, I don't think the surveillance issue is nearly as big as it's being made out. But the strategy for keeping the data update is a money issue. Don't waste your money collecting data that won't be kept up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Kelly Hammergrin. Kelly, you're live.
Hi, thank you. Um, I really appreciate the, the good, um, discussion tonight and the comments, uh, the, all, all of the commenters, um, and also what you have said, Mayor Aragine and, um, the other members of council, Harrison, Han, Davila, Bartlet. Uh, I appreciate all your concern for the surveillance and the collection of data. Whoever collects the data, whatever entity collects the data, controls the data. And, um, it just seems like all, the whole proposal should come to the council at once. And it seems to me that last time this was on the agenda, surveillance was brought up, the surveillance ordinance. So I don't understand why it didn't all come together tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Moni Law.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. Um, yes, I am, um, this is item 13, correct? Make sure I'm on the correct item. Uh, the $436,000 for three years, is that the software AG? Twenty-three?
Yes.
But the software AG that we're talking about is a different contract? Okay, okay, it's a similar concept. My concern, and I'm really, really appreciative of all the council members' passion about protecting privacy, is that policy is important, and you would lay the foundation before you would build the walls. So if we don't have a sound foundation, I think we risk a number of issues that will arise later. And I am concerned, uh, Councilmember Wengraft did ask a good question about what would we lose if we didn't adopt this particular approach? And there were some efficiencies lost in manual entries, et cetera. We want electronic files within city staff. I'm talking on my own personal behalf, not as a city employee. But there are efficiencies there, but there's a big cost to be paid if we don't have the right policy in place. So I thank you for that. Lastly, um, IC kiosks. Um, we talked about this, and a number of public members, myself included, raised serious concerns about the IC kiosks, including them not being disability accessible. And I don't know if that one slipped through without a policy about, uh, this protection from surveillance. If you're passing the policy, I would hope it would also go retroactive to any programs that you've already approved, paid lots of money for, to post up 20 ugly large kiosk around the city that are gonna invade our privacy as well. So please adopt it upon, upon all instruments that you put into play. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I see.
And maybe rethink that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't see any other raised hands. So, Mr. Clerk, were there any written comments on this item?
No written comments.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council. First speaker on the queue is Councilmember Harrison. Any speaker on five minutes?
Yeah, I don't think I'll need that long. I think, you know, I'd just like to suggest we get the surveillance and the use policy, and why don't we just continue this item to the second meeting in June? And I, I'm asking staff if that's a feasible timeframe. Because literally what you're saying in your memo is, we're gonna get rid of the data, and we're not gonna use it for these purposes. So we just need a policy that says, we're gonna get rid of the data, and we're not gonna use it for these purposes. So can that be done for the second meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'd like to amend my motion to say that we're gonna continue this, that second meeting in June.
Excellent. That's June 16th, I believe.
Correct.
So, Councilor Droste, you've drawn your motion. Is acceptable to Vice Mayor Han?
Yes, I accept it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Harrison, for helping us thread the needle. I appreciate it. Um, anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Councilor Droste?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess this is, I, I, I don't need to say too much. I, what I'm interested in hearing then when we come back is specifically the impacts to Irma and to, you know, some of the curb cuts. Because wha, what I'm hearing, and, you know, I acknowledge, my phone reads my face, so this is not my, you know, my pet issue, and I should probably be more concerned. But having said that, I was also a history teacher, so it's not about reading history. I think it's just about, uh, different, a different opinion. You know, I, I am really, uh, concerned about these trade-offs we're gonna be making over the next month. And, you know, what is the impact on Irma, on some of this massive infrastructure? And at the budget meetings, we've been talking about operational efficiencies a lot. And how can we, how can we focus on operational efficiencies? Well, to, well, to me, uh, GIS, which I, I appreciated Bryce's comments, um, we do, we do have people working on GIS on staff right now. Um, you know, that is, that is critically important. Um, I do think that makes a lot of sense to, to have a policy saying that we're not gonna use it for malicious purposes or for purposes other than what's intended. So, um, when that comes back, you know, hopefully we can thread the needle on that. Um, but I do think that we really need to pay attention to some of these, these trade-offs. And yes, um, it, it's true that people have different concerns about what those trade-offs are. Uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're not, we're not tuned in to history or Brave New World or whatever. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
It's a, it's a moot question now, but I, I think it'd probably still be instructive to make sure I, I understand. Um, what I was wondering was, uh, you know, in this scenario where we're talking about, um, yeah, potentially approving this item, which I understood to be the, the contract, but then taking up the, the use policy for the surveillance ordinance later. If that second process resulted in us deciding to renege on the contract, to, to not go with Cyclomedia, would that open us up to any sort of, uh, legal liability for making that decision after having approved the contract? Question mark? I don't know. That's, that's why.
So, um, it's a, the city attorney would have to weigh into that question. Um, and while she thinks about that, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand, um, what we're coming back with on the second, so that everyone's clear. The request is that we would come back with this item with both an acquisition report and also a, a use report. I just want to make sure that we meet your expectations, because I don't know that June 2nd, we'll be able to bring all of those documents back. Um, so if that's not the case, and I need to work with the staff to figure out when, if June 2nd is not a date in which we can get all of that, that done.
I believe the date that was suggested was June 16th.
June 16th, okay. So June 16th for both acquisitions?
If PRC is not meeting, uh, with the exception of very specific matters, this can go straight to the council.
Thank you for the clarification.
Robinson? You have the floor. Oh, uh, there was a question. Um, is the city, the city attorney, do you have any, uh, any thoughts on Councilor Robinson's question?
If we don't know, it's, it's not really, it's not sensitive.
Mayor, I, I believe that we don't incur legal liability. I'm trying to take a quick look and see, um, to be able to more thoroughly respond to that question. I, I wanna take a, a few minutes to just read.
Absolutely.
For not missing something.
Do the right thing as our attorney to have a well-researched answer. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and again, it's, uh, it's not time-sensitive anymore, so if it makes more sense to, it's a lot of snow later. I'm always okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Davila?
Thank you. Um, so I was curious if you can answer what you're using now without this contract?
We don't use anything. It's a lot of manual work right now. We have static, uh, images or digital drawings with no real-life data. So if somebody needs to do a measurement, they have to go to that site and then do the manual work to measure height, breadth and width of the location.
And so you referenced Google Maps a, a, a few times, so I'm curious if that is able to help you do this at all?
No, because we don't own the data, so we don't have access to any of the data layers.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Google does not capture our assets either. Google only captures the street-level imagery. What we're going to do is, after we capture the street-level imagery, we're actually working with the vendor and staff to extract the data out of that imagery to say this point is a stop sign, this point is a green, uh, marking on the parking, this point is disabled parking, so we're going to do all of that data extraction. This is where, you know, the water backflows are, all of that information. Um, bus, bus pads, where is bus pad? All of that information, um, will be identified as a point in space.
Thank you.
I just had a follow-up question to that, if you don't mind, Mayor. I was just curious if, um, I mean, we don't have like a database that tells us all that information currently. That would be surprising to me.
No, it's in Excel spreadsheets.
Of course it is. All right, thank you.
The motion is for this to come back to us. Um, Councilmember Wengraft?
Thank you. Uh, actually, I'm really glad that we, um, had this discussion, because I think that there was a lot of misunderstanding and, and some miscommunication. So, um, uh, I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that opportunity to get more information and learn more about what this is all about. Um, as Savita, um, describes it, there's a lot of, um, uh, hours involved in collecting, uh, all of this data manually. And I, I, I don't know if anybody has calculated what the savings would be to the city if we move forward with this. Um, does anybody, maybe, um, Mr. White, do you have any sense at all of what that might be?
I defer to Savita, who's looked at that, um, more closely than I would have.
Well, the reason we haven't looked at that is because for the city as a whole, we have one GIS person who can only work on so many projects. Uh, she already has seven projects assigned. She manages all of the day-to-day operational support for all of the departments, so there's no way that one employee can handle all of these major GIS-related projects.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kessawani.
Thank you very much. So now I just had a process question. So the, uh, motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to continue the item to June 16th, but to also come back with two things, an acquisition report and a use policy at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so then I had a question for staff, which is I, uh, from the earlier, uh, discussion we had, our Q and A, I thought that we had to approve the item tonight before we could do, get this acquisition report. Um, is that not the case? You can, we can approve the item and you can, or we can not approve the item tonight, and you can come back with this acquisition report still on June 16th? I just want to clarify that.
Continuing the item is fine, and then we'll bring everything back that, that's perfect for us to move forward with.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, so we have a motion, which is to continue this item to June 16th meeting, at which time, uh, we are, um, uh, directing the city manager to come back with an acquisition and surveillance use, uh, repo, uh, pol, uh, report and policy for this particular technology. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Kessawani?
Yes.
Davila?
Councilor Davila?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Wengraft?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Droste?
Yes.
Mayor Aragine?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, motion carries. Thank you, colleagues. We're gonna take a 10-minute caption break, and then we'll be back and we'll go to the budget item.